Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of February 28th. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. I'd like to thank Liz Poplowski, who's with us this evening from SMC and helping with our broadcast. First on the agenda is public participation. No one has asked to address the committee this evening. If anybody wishes to join us in the future, please contact us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.m a.us. Next is chairperson and members' report. Anything? Nope? Next is superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Wanted to give a shout out to all the folks who put on our vacation program, enrichment program over the February vacation. I had the opportunity to visit the Beal School and tour all the different classes that were happening, in the morning session at least. Wanted to thank Karen Isaacson, our director of extended learning, for her leadership in putting that program together, along with her assistant, Mary Reyna, and all the different staff members. We had a variety of, whether it was some teachers, paraprofessionals, who offered courses Tuesday through Friday of the vacation week. Everything from chess to lots of different art courses, hands-on craft kinds of things. It was, the kids were very engaged and enjoying. It was a K-6 program and was very successful. So I wanted to thank them for their hard work. There'll be another one coming up in April vacation. Signups will be coming up for those soon, I'm sure, and then signups are already happening for our summer enrichment program. That's available on our website. It's been emailed through a link in our community bulletin as well. But just another way that we provide options and opportunities for families even when schools are closed, for do something constructive when parents need to work and/or not. And kids can be engaged with something for a half or a full day. So that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Soref. Our first time scheduled appointment this evening is a staff wellness initiatives report. We have Dr. Jane Lozot with us. She's our assistant superintendent for community partnership and wellbeing. And Dr. Lozot will present information regarding the district's staff wellness initiatives to date, including the work completed by the district's staff wellness team, opportunities for professional development and support, and feedback from the recent staff wellness survey. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks so much for having me. And I want to start by thanking our incredible staff for all they do each day, for their colleagues and students and families. And I'm very happy to be here to provide a wellbeing update. In this slide pictured here, we have a vertical team from Floral Street School. Vertical being teachers from different grade levels, some specialists, special educators, who are participating in a relational activity at the beginning of a staff meeting recently. They were doing an amazing race challenge. And one of the ways in which we look to build relationships with one another and connect is at the start of meetings, as often as possible, to further get to know one another and also have some fun. The quote here is taken from a recent article in Edweek, and it resonated with me, so I'm going to share it. "Education is a human endeavor and learning is built on relationships. Creating a culture of care in our schools," and I'd add, "in our world, "is a necessary endeavor in the best of times and an imperative when times are tough." And we truly believe that, and we've had a number of conversations. I'll talk a little bit in a few minutes about how it is that we build those relationships with one another so that we can meet the needs of our students, meet and exceed their needs, in addition to our own needs and those of our families and community. Another quote, many of us have participated in the Good Life book study groups, and this quote is taken from The Good Life by Robert Weldinger and Mark, I forget his last name, from Harvard University. And the quote is, "Good relationships keep us happier, healthier, and help us live longer." Pictured here is SHS teacher, Spanish teacher Monica Klun, and a number of staff who have been participating in pickleball this winter. And I'll talk a little bit about those options coming up. I too would like to thank Karen Isaacson for all of the wonderful work she does as that relates to encouraging staff to offer a variety of opportunities to both students and colleagues because they make a positive difference to those who are able to participate and seeking to participate. We know that staff wellbeing is integral to our personal and professional lives, and we continue to seek ways to strengthen those wellbeing and diversify those wellbeing opportunities. Foundational to all that we do here, again, taken from that same article from Edweek, "When schools are driven by the needs of their people, not just the curriculum or school improvement plan, employee happiness increases and student engagement and learning skyrockets. Building a culture of caring does not happen overnight. It requires ongoing effort and action for the shift to create real change, yet it is also something that you can start to affect tomorrow or today." So staff survey and anecdotal data illustrate appreciation for the positive school cultures in our district. Cultures where staff feel a sense of belonging and connection, where they feel trusted by their colleagues. And more on that in a few moments. As you are well aware, one of our strategic commitments is enhanced wellbeing of all. With the prior strategic priority, that includes promote student and staff wellness, expand opportunities for students and staff to strengthen mental health and physical wellness in support of overall wellbeing. Pictured here is Kim Bertham's third grade class at Beal School. Kim and the paraprofessionals with whom she works recently participated with their students in a mindfulness workshop with Jordan Grinstein. And one of the survey comments that you find in your report focuses on opportunities to learn and grow as those opportunities relate to wellbeing, and in this case, being mindfulness and the impact on teachers and students. As you know, wellbeing encompasses the comprehensive dimensions of a well-lived life, including these elements shared via Gallup's Global Research. Career wellbeing, social wellbeing, financial wellbeing, physical wellbeing, and community wellbeing. We're living in a time of many challenges globally and locally, and we know that when we are able to connect with our fellow human beings, colleagues, family members, et cetera, we are better able to live the joyful and well lives that we seek to lead. So creating a culture of care in the Shrewsbury Public Schools, again, through our day-to-day observations and interactions with one another, we know that our staff highly respect one another and value time and opportunity to collaborate with one another. Recent survey, wellbeing survey data and conversations with staff in school and district meetings indicate a strong desire to increase and diversify collaboration opportunities. And when we do this, it includes during team meetings, grade level meetings, curriculum meetings, staff meetings. At the elementary level, educators benefit from Coaching Thursdays where staff are invited to visit other colleagues' classrooms with the support of the instructional coaches. Additionally, during professional development opportunities, where we have opportunity to learn and grow with one another, learn strategies and build our skills. And that professional development includes our professional staff. Additionally, paraprofessionals have some opportunities, mostly at the beginning of the year, for that skill building, and we're looking to seek opportunities as often as we can that impact all of our staff positively. So unprecedented levels of stress, also known as chronic stress, are the greatest challenge facing educators and, many would argue, society today, and are negatively impacting public education. By providing all staff with strategies, resources, and opportunities that focus on stress management is imperative. Shrewsbury Public Schools leadership teams are asked with scrutin, are tasked with scrutinizing how the ways in which our work is done can reduce or increase stress on the system and the people within it. We have a, we've been looking at different studies as a staff wellbeing group. One recent study that we read came from Yale Medical School. And in that, we learned that a consistent sense of feeling pressured and overwhelmed over a long period of time is problematic. Symptoms include insomnia, weakness, achiness, pains, lack of focus. So as a team and as a district, again, we're looking at ways to lighten the load or maybe more effectively use the time that we have just in our day-to-day interactions, greeting one another in the morning, checking in with each other during the day so that we can be of the support that we know we all benefit from. And here are those many forms, stress and exhaustion. Oh, this is, this is similar study from Harvard Business Review. So what does the research say about structural supports that enable teacher wellbeing? Dr. Soria kindly shared this study with us this summer. This is the central question in Structural Supports to Promote Teacher Wellbeing, a brief by the Annenberg Center at Brown University. School and district leadership teams are reviewing our organizational structures. Those include schedules, curriculum commitments, et cetera, and interventions, including allocating time and establishing practices for collaborative work, building connections and managing workload to meet the wellbeing needs of staff in the weeks and months ahead as we do this important work that we do each day. One of the recommended action steps includes building a systemic and sustainable culture of care. Again, these action steps shared by Edweek recently mirror those suggested by SPS staff in recent weeks and months. They highlight what many of our staff believe to be most impactful to their wellbeing, including acknowledging individuals, demonstrating care, and showing our human side of leadership. Providing training and professional development so that we're equipped with the skills and strategies and knowledge that we need to do this important work. Invest in and expand the skills and mindsets of everyone in our schools. The old saying goes, "Put your money where your mouth is." If you make a tangible investment in building a culture of care, your staff will know that you are serious about it. This can range from scheduling more time for collaboration to hiring support staff through to professional learning. Your budget is a moral document. We administered staff wellness surveys in June through Panorama, and again, this January through Survey Monkey, through the Survey Monkey tool, and you have all the results of those surveys in your report. Additionally, school leadership teams, principals and assistant principals, directors and other leaders in the district, surveyed staff two or more times during the school year to obtain their input on a variety of topics, both school-based and district-based, including culture and collaboration. Here's one snapshot from the information you have from the Panorama data in June. Teacher and staff survey results indicate teachers, those who completed the survey, there are approximately 360, 92% feel a strong sense of belonging, 97% perceptions of the overall social and learning climate of the school, and 73% in background questions. Here is a snapshot from, screenshot from our recent survey in January. We had 124 people answer this question. We had 166 total staff participate in the survey. What specific offerings and our practices have you either participated in or plan to? Check all that apply. You can see the list there. I won't read them. If you participated in any of the above on the previous screen, how satisfied were you with the quality of the programs? If you do not participate in wellness offerings, what are the reasons? Check as many that apply, and those range from, "I do wellness activities outside of school. I don't have time to attend these offerings. The offerings don't appeal." And then there were other reasons, again, that you have access to, all the comments from staff. Please rate your overall satisfaction with the wellness offerings. Here's just one glimpse of, these are the winter offerings that staff offer to staff, and they're called the For Staff by Staff. Quite a variety there that are well received, and again, we're very grateful to those who both participate and offer their time and energy to organize and put these together for their colleagues. Additionally, there are book clubs at individual schools and a variety of other ways in which staff socialize outside of school and connect with one another. So the next steps include building and supporting a culture of staff wellness across the Shrewsbury Public Schools. We are working as both a staff wellbeing leadership team and in our district and school leadership teams to contribute to and develop a staff wellbeing program and framework. Very grateful to those in our schools who have contributed their comments by taking surveys and, again, their time and expertise to help colleagues with their needs and celebrate their accomplishments. There's a lot of celebration that happens as well. The program will both focus on how to assist colleagues in balancing and coping with the significant challenges inherent in public education. And specifically, how the ways in which that work is done can reduce or increase stress on the system and the people within it. And the program is targeted for completion by April 15th. And I'd like to thank Liz Poplowski for helping with this, putting this program together as well. She's always very generous at their time. Research Ways to Receive Expert Help is another action step at low to no cost that focuses on how to best approach the issue of staff stress. There are organizations and individuals out there who have expressed interest in helping us. The staff wellness leadership team, teacher leaders, and administrators continue to look at a range of systemic supports to address staff stress with the understanding that one size does not fit all. Our schools will benefit greatly from staffing capacity to ensure that this important work is done with fidelity. The superintendent's budget recommendation includes a wellbeing coordinator position in FY '25, using the funds currently set aside for the mindfulness director position. This person would coordinate and provide wellbeing supports for students and staff to address needs related to stress management, emotional regulation, et cetera. Additional information on this proposed role will be shared later in the budget process. And then just a couple of offerings coming soon. Workshop entitled Struggling Well with Leah Cristo from Assumption University and Karen Gudicants. They're going to start the workshop in mid-March, every other Wednesday from 4:00 to 5:00 at Sherwood. All are welcome, all staff, and encouraged to attend and participate. We'll be having a well, a spring wellness retreat. We have about 30 people already signed up with Jordan Grinstein and Beth McInerney, grade 2 teacher at Beal, on Sunday, March 24th at Shrewsbury High School from 1:00 to 4:00. And again, continued looking at collaboration opportunities that provide educators with things they need. We call them win blocks for students and what I need blocks over the coming months so that we can support their needs and their student needs specifically as best, as best we can. That's all.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Lindsay?
Yeah, I want to thank you very much, Dr. Lozot, for the comprehensive report. And it certainly, you know, in my world, we often do fall back to a little bit of the trope that culture eats strategy for lunch, right? Like, if you don't have a good culture, we can do a lot of strategic planning work and how critical and essential it is. So I, and certainly want to appreciate that you're trying to build a whole bunch of frameworks around making sure that we're doing that work and that that work is really important and essential. And I certainly want all the staff to know who've responded to the surveys that we've received that I've read all of the comments, that those matter to me, that folks taking their time and putting the effort in, that I am sure, even as you mentioned, we all have survey fatigue, but I want folks to know, you know, we're paying attention and care. And one of the things that I really appreciate is the different levels in which this work is important. There's a district-level work, there's building-level work, down to, you know, peer-led work. You're, you know, For Staff by Staff, right? Those are helping each other out as we, you know, have chosen a profession that is challenging and that has, you know, become more challenging. So I think there's so many levels for us to kind of try to make sure we continue to wrap our, wrap our hands around this. And one of the things that was in your report, and I may have missed it here, but is sort of, how many of our programs are we thinking about also involve town-wide partnerships? I know that was mentioned a couple of different times, and so it's just interesting, you know, we're one of, if not one of the largest employers in town, but we also have all of these other town employees and so, who are in many ways public servants too, certainly. And so can you speak a little bit to what that has kind of looked like, that model? It may only be, we're beginning to dabble in.
It's new, and that is true too. I reached out to Nick Hawes and Chris Matero back in November to see how they may want to get involved and the town staff in some of our offerings. We had maybe 14 town employees sign up for the Winter Wellness Retreat that we had to cancel due to the weather, some of whom have signed up for the Spring Wellness Retreat. Additionally, I've sent, what else? Oh, on Tuesdays at noon for the past nine weeks, Jordan Grinstein comes to this room, and he has many participants from Town Hall and other buildings in town for 12 to 12:25, 12 to 12:25 mindfulness and meditation, and that's been well received. I've also sent some other opportunities, but we're, we're new to, we're new in this partnership. But I thought it would be, be wonderful, the more, the merrier. Including the Struggling Well, I'm going to reach out to Nick. But I've been communicating, how does this sound? You know, things like, what do you think your staff would be interested in, any of the following? And you're welcome to join us.
I just want to really appreciate the effort there that while they are Shrewsbury Public School employees or also, well, town employees and how to think about whether, you know, the stresses, I'm thinking about the, you know, relatively recent and growing stresses in the public library relating to the children and the behaviors of the children. Or, you know, Town Rec is trying to promote programs and they're having difficulty engaging, engaging families. Or there are some overlaps that are obvious or dealing, you know, with whether it's at the senior center, other vulnerable populations as they come through the pandemic. So the ways in which we can think about sort of town responses, as appropriate. We have our own, our own challenges to deal with, but it's, I really just appreciated that that was part of your thinking and ways to kind of also look at this issue a little more holistically too. As well, I don't want to in any way discount that education has gone through something quite unique during the pandemic, as you noted. Stress is stress, and lots of people are carrying too much of it. And so how can we also think about ways to kind of continue to strengthen that? And frankly, build partnerships for our staff. Once they leave our buildings, there's all these other town employees too, who are kind of here to help better the town, just with a maybe different lens.
I neglected to mention one other opportunity. Jessica Gifford from Project Connect Northampton offered a wellbeing challenge for the, over the past four weeks. 16 of the participants are town employees and maybe 23 are school employees. And it's great to interact. It's all been virtual and you can imagine, just the back and forth. But wonderful that people are using each other as resources and that, I forgot to mention that opportunity. And thanks to West Suburban Health Group for funding that particular opportunity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
John? Thank you for the report. I really appreciate the work that goes into the staff wellness programs that you shared. I think it's, it's great. I think it's important to the culture. Kind of in the beginning stages now where we're establishing this offering year over year. You obviously want to see more, more staff engagement, but that doesn't happen overnight, as you mentioned, right? You want to have established, sustainable programs that staff can look forward to, you know, year over year. I love the For Staff by Staff offerings. I think that gives an outlet for staff to connect with their colleagues outside of work. I think among the comments that I read, the challenge is the time after school. You know, after a long day, that is a challenge. It's also challenging to try to do any wellness programs during the workday of a services-based industry. I could tell you, like, my company offers wellness programs quarterly. I can block a two-hour, you know, timeframe and I can, I can attend it, but it's hard to do, obviously, you know, in this setting. So, but again, I think the effort is excellent. I think the communication examples that you provided were great. I think promoting what's available even beyond some of these programs, some of the other opportunities that maybe staff might be interested in, that we could provide, you know, discounts to various shows that you had. And the communication, I think, is great. So continue, encourage you to continue forward, and thanks to all those that offer their talents for these staff programs. I think it's pretty great.
And additionally, the staff who encourage one another to take the 10-minute walk around the field at lunchtime. I have the benefit of traveling between schools and I'm regularly putting my window down saying, "Great job." You'll see a group of five, you know, we have 12 minutes and they're chatting away. And those small moments in time are, I won't say almost more beneficial, but they are equally beneficial to how you return then to the classroom.
Yeah, thanks.
I'd also like to thank you for the report, and I guess the one comment I had, and John touched on it, is, you know, the tension between staff wanting to access the programming and not being able to have the time and whether or not incorporating some of these into like professional development days. And I know there's plenty of work to be done on those days as well, but it may be in even small time chunks. And has that been explored at all or?
We've discussed, that's a great question, and we have discussed how is it that we can include a hybrid? We have our professional learning, as far as learning about our new early literacy program and all the other curriculum-related commitments that we have made, rightfully so. But where is it that we can take snippets of time to, you know, learn how to de-stress? Maybe not only learn ourselves how to de-stress, how do we help students who are struggling doing the same? How do we teach one another those skills that we could all benefit from and strategies? And it is something that we've actively been discussing quite recently, based on the survey data and based on our daily interactions, and we have hundreds of them every day, where we're getting many signals, you know, SOS, "I need help," and I, I want to be better, I want to do better. But how, where can we find that time and opportunity? So thank you.
And I think in the report too, you mentioned, Dr. Lozot, that on the September 1st Professional Development Day this past year, Leah Cristo from Assumption University presented, made a presentation to all pre-K-8 staff around burnout and maybe talk about, I know the high school's going to have that sometime this spring. They had a previously scheduled piece that they had to do that day. But I know you mentioned she, it's on the screen right now, that she was going to be providing, co-teaching something with Ms. Gudicants from Sherwood, the assistant principal.
That's a great example.
Can you talk a little bit about Leah Cristo and how the connection there was created?
Sure. It was revisiting the topic of burnout in that she shared what happens to our, you know, mental and physical selves as we undergo, or where we have chronic stress in our lives, and really got to the scientific, like, yes, what is happening? And how is it that we can kind of change our brains and et cetera? And she provided some, some strategies, but it was real, it was very educational. The workshop coming up in March, equally so. So we're struggling. How do we do that well? Where we have moments of time during the day that we can take? How do we do that well, where we have moments of time during the day that we can take for ourselves that are four seconds in length and whatnot? But she's also going to share with Karen a lot of the scientific research that's been done that relates to, so chronic stress leads to burnout. And how is it that we can make some small shifts that will provide big differences to how we live?
I think you mentioned it's an example of, you know, a resource in the area. Ms. Cristo is the Director of Resiliency and the Helping Professions Program at Assumption University that, you know, is close by that we can take advantage of and work with, and she was eager to work with us. And, you know, tapping into some existing pieces, that's a good example of some of the things we're trying to provide as well.
And those staff, we have a handful who have gone through that certification program and can't say enough about it.
I also want to thank you for this report. I want to also, like Ms. Heffernan said, each one of us read every single comment that came in, in the results, and we are listening. The one thing that I, that came up as I was reading this, and especially talking about staff stress and how do we help the staff during the workday? Have we thought, and I'm sure you have, but of including the PTOs in some of the conversations, maybe being on part of these committees to see, because a lot of PTOs do things to help staff, to give teacher, you know, recognition, and a lot of it is drop-in events. But the PTOs generally are like, what do we think is a good idea? But maybe by including them, being like, this is, this is what's happening, it might help the needs and it might be building base too. What Beal needs, the PTO might be able to say, oh, we can change programming. Then maybe instead of a candy event this month, maybe we get massage chairs, like, you know, something like that. I'm just wondering if, that'll look different at elementary versus middle school versus high school. But have we thought of including like outside groups as well to include like the families?
Yes, yes, and no, well, I don't know that nobody's thought, I, we haven't, I love that idea. What I should have mentioned and showed gratitude for our PTOs because you saw in the survey and what we hear in meetings is it's great to have some food, to feel spoiled and to know that breakfast is served a few times a year or whatnot, like those opportunities bring people together. And we know it's all about being brought together, connection and relationships. We have, I was in a Good Life book group tonight at Beal before coming here, and the idea of how is it that we can partner with families and learn together? This specific idea comment came up around working with students who, all of our students, but when students have trouble self-regulating or making some good decisions or building relationships, making friends, how can we partner together to do that? So I appreciate that and you were, it feels like you were in the room an hour ago.
Yeah, I was.
But with PTOs and school councils, I think that's a great idea, and it's all about that, the community. And we need each other to do this work well and both at home and at school, as you know.
And thank you, you, we have a much longer report. You had your slides, but this will be on our website tomorrow. For anybody watching, there's a lot more detail than what you were able to, you know, put into your presentation tonight. So I think it's very helpful for people to see all of that information. And, you know, we've been talking about stress in our schools and Dr. Sawyer's State of the Union, say the Union, State of the School address, and we know public school, it's very different now. There is issues that we haven't dealt with in the past, we see things in the media. It's very stressful to be a school teacher. And, you know, when John talked about, you know, in our companies, we have wellness programs, but that time component is universal, like nobody has enough time to do their work, never mind take care of themselves during the day. So I think keeping this program and how it will morph over time, we're probably going to see some changes, some increases. And I like the comment about having, if it's a town, it's open to everyone. Because I'd love to see the numbers be higher, because it's a lot of work. And if the numbers are low, we want to have higher participation. So I think, you know, looking at the source of the stress, so then we can figure out what are the best tools to use. And I know time seems to be the universal thing across the survey, we just don't have enough time. And that will be difficult to solve, but hopefully we'll be able to find some ways to do that. So thank you for everything you're doing. I know it's a lot of work. But again, the stress, we have to find ways to deal with it and make our staff feel better and our students feel better. But I do love that comment about making it townwide.
I do too, and a smile goes a long way in a day. A number of our staff go off to their next job or whatnot, but just being greeted. We all know how much that means, so.
Right.
There are little things that go a long way as well.
But thank you for everything you're doing.
You're welcome.
Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. First, I want to thank Dr. Lozot for the report and everyone who's worked with her this year and the many different initiatives that have been put together. I know there's the list of the members of the Wellness Leadership Team that are in your report and appreciate all their extra time, their spending and their dedication to trying to make things work better for their colleagues and the system. I think it's important that we're being very public about this issue. We were last spring in our strategic plan that was developed. We have been doing that with school improvement plans, you know, and we've been very purposeful that, you know, the commitment to the enhanced wellbeing of all means all, it doesn't just mean students, it means everyone. It means our families to the extent we can influence that, but certainly all of our staff, our colleagues who do this work every day. And I think acknowledging that there is a tremendous amount of stress right now in, certainly in society, not unique, but there are special stressors that educators have been dealing with in this sort of post-COVID environment that are very challenging. And I think that the fact that Dr. Lozot and other colleagues are making it a point to reach out and ask and listen rather than, you know, I mean, it's all fine to keep calm and carry on, but by, you know, pretending there's not an issue would not be healthy. And there's no simple solution. There's a variety of things that we're going to have to continue to do to look at how we can address these things, whether it's how the way people work, how we structure the ability for people to do their work well. We want to set all of our staff up for success to benefit our kids. And, you know, there's, I think, a lot of good ideas that are out there, and the work that's happening is how can we make this systemic? We've always done various things, but to have things be comprehensive and coordinated is something that I think is something that we're seeing more of, and that's the charge that this leadership team has. And I think that we'll look forward to when that, whatever the result is, that we think around mid-April or so will be done. At some subsequent meeting before the end of the school year, we'll present what that looks like. And again, it's important work, this is not a one-off. It's going to have to happen and be sustained over time for us to be able to find out what's working. We're going to try some things that will work, we'll try some things that won't work. But we have to, we have to attempt to try to really address this because it really is an important issue and, you know, the health and wellbeing of everyone in our school community. Tonight, we're focused on staff, but, you know, everyone's health and wellbeing is important and we have to have a commitment to making that as strong as possible. So appreciate the time and the report and all the connections. And, you know, if you know Dr. Lozot, she is everywhere seemingly, it's, she's trying to get ahold of her. I was at this book group, I was at this piece, and this is only part of her job, as you know. She'll be reporting out when she does a budget report on all the career technical education and community partnership work she's also doing. But I think there's a nice synergy there because whether it's like Ms. Cristo from Assumption or other things, we've been able to make connections because of the role Dr. Lozot plays. So appreciate all the efforts you're making and everyone who's working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Dr. Sawyer will summarize his recommendations for the proposed twenty-four through twenty-five school year calendar.
Thank you. The calendar is in your packet, the draft of the next school year's calendar. The recommendation that I'm making to you is that we take the same approach that we have in recent years. We did have a calendar committee that convened in two thousand and sixteen to, again, revisit the approach that the district takes to the calendar, and the calendar has remained pretty aligned with what their recommendations were, which, that group pretty much reaffirmed what the approach we have been using for some time now. The same approach in terms of beginning the school year on the staff, first day for staff being the Monday prior to Labor Day, the first day for students in grades one through twelve being the Tuesday, and then the Wednesday being the first day for kindergarten and preschool. The, and then having a professional development day for staff on that Friday, which has worked well for us to get the year underway and then be able to focus on some key things that we need to focus on at the very start of the school year. It also maintains the other full Professional Development Day in October and then five early release days, one monthly December through April. This past year, we had a little different approach to our parent conference day, which is also Professional Development Day at the high school level and for our specialty departments, whereas this year there was no federal election or state election, and we typically have it on Election Day. And the proposal is to do that again in two thousand and twenty-four, given it's a presidential election and Coolidge and Spring Street are both polling places. The need for parking and a lot of visitors into the school environment makes that challenging. And so that's the recommendation. This past year, because there was no election, we aligned it next to Veterans Day to create back-to-back days off of school there. The other change compared to the last couple of years, for as long as I've been in the district until a few years ago, we'd always had a couple of days in the spring where there was no school for kindergarten students and there were screening days for incoming students for the next year. We tried out doing that a little bit differently, but the consensus among the K-24 principals is that that was not working as effectively and they felt that the screening process, to be able to accomplish the majority of that on those two days with no school, as we've always done for preschool as well, would, it makes more sense. And so that would be a return that may first and second would be no school days for kindergarteners as well as preschoolers. As far as our approach to holidays, there's a number of state holidays that by law were required to not have school. And then, you know, the calendar committee in two thousand and sixteen solicited a lot of feedback from the community about this and made the recommendation, and I continue to recommend that we not have no school days on any particularly religious holidays. The, at the same time, and I think we have done a strong job communicating around this this year, we'll continue to work at that to emphasize to families that, you know, we certainly, if they need to take the day, if the students need to be out of school for their religious observance, that they can do that without any penalty whatsoever, that accommodations will be made. We've also been aligning some of those dates, not all, but some with the additional no homework weekends or dates that was part of the updated homework policy that was adopted last spring. We'll be asking for feedback very shortly from the community and from our staff around how that's going this year. So we'll, I'll make a recommendation later in the spring for the no homework calendar for next year after we have a sense of that. We're only a little bit halfway through the year, so we wanted to give that a little bit more time. But at the same time, you know, that's taken off some of the pressure where, although all students would have no homework on those days, so it isn't, well, I'm missing an assignment, my peers are doing the assignment, I don't want to go to my religious observance because I feel like I'm falling behind. We're hopeful it's taken a little bit of that pressure off in those cases. In terms of, you know, the newest state holiday of Juneteenth, Independence Day, that is always celebrated on June nineteenth, this calendar would have the final one hundred and eightieth day of school on Friday, June thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-five. And we would only run into Juneteenth being a no school day if we have four days or more of snow days next year. This year, knock on wood, you know, we haven't had many, obviously, year to year, that can differ. But that is noted on the calendar, so people understand that if we are still in session Thursday, that schools have to be closed per state law. And then finally, in terms of the Columbus Day Indigenous Peoples' Day, it was the second Monday in October. A few years back, two thousand and twenty-one, we recommended that we include the language Indigenous Peoples' Day. That's become, although not officially a state holiday, a widely used term and observance on that particular day. And as we've discussed other times in response to communications and a petition of the school committee, there are some who feel strongly that we should not be using the verbiage of Columbus Day in the calendar. That said, and I certainly understand that perspective, I continue to recommend that listing the official state holiday in combination with Indigenous Peoples' Day is what, how the calendar should be reflected. But again, want to reiterate that what's, something labeled on the calendar does not influence how we teach about a particular historical time or individual, and what should be done, of course, accurately and thoughtfully, which I believe our faculty and staff work hard to do. So that is the draft of the proposed calendar for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And be happy to answer any questions or hear any comments from the committee. And we'd ask that we'll post this on our website tomorrow, and the public can certainly can provide feedback. In the interim, would ask that at your meeting two weeks from this evening, that you'd vote to make it official so that we can publicize it.
Thank you. Comments, questions? No?
Yeah, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness. I think there's a lot of predictability now. I saw on a little bit of social media, someone was asking, when will the start of school be? And people said, well, here's what we usually do, and that there's something actually very good about that, right? Because this is really important to so many, you know, six thousand children and obviously many, many families in our community. Dr. Sawyer, I would like to, I really appreciate it when this year began, the concerted effort that I saw as a parent in my parent settings and the district around both religious observances and no homework weekends. And I would just want to encourage that I think that there's probably still some room for growth there. I'm particularly thinking for families who are new to the district, like how do we make that part of the packet and make it just really? I don't think we could probably over-communicate because we have heard that families do feel like there's a potential stigma or something that I think your staff works really hard to undermine, but we have to kind of get ahead of it in order to get there. So I think that there's probably some work there. And then I learned a little something, again, when I was wasting my time on social media, which is probably something Dr. Lozot should tell me is not good for my mental health. But that there is ways that families can get sort of like pushed updates about our calendar through our website. And I honestly, I really had no idea what they were talking about. Is that something that is, that is a tool that families sign up for? Do you know or could you?
I believe our calendar has that capacity.
Like some widget, you can say you want, you want updates or something?
I will, I will plead, you have our technology director here, he's going to present later, so he may, but there may be a feed you can click on.
When I heard that, whatever it might be, obviously, I'm not quite signed up for it, but just want to sort of acknowledge that we do a lot to try to make sure families know what's going on and what's happening in calendars and scheduling, and for families with multiple children is obviously complex and confusing at any given time. And so if anything, it wasn't to, it wasn't to put you on the hot seat, it was to say, I'm glad we're trying all these different ways to kind of make sure families know, and parents, and certainly our staff to know, right? What their, what their work calendar is is critically important, so thank you for the thoughtfulness.
That's fine, and actually I'll just pull up quickly here in a moment, I think. No, I won't because Amy Clutter's putting her screen up, so we're competing. Give me one second here, but, okay, it's not pulling up my.
I don't feel like I often learn a lot from social media, so it was a moment for me.
There we go. So I just did pull up our website, and if you go to the upcoming events, you can subscribe.
Ah, okay.
And our website is, this is a dynamic website that can be Google translated as well. And again, we try to make sure people are aware. And the suggestion about providing some information to parents as they register, I think is also a terrific idea. And it's something that, you know, we're working hard and, you know, we're fortunate that, you know, our face at the front window, Kevin Escalante, is bilingual. He was working with a family that speaks Spanish today to help them enroll them. And, you know, we're finding more and more ways to connect with families and communicate in ways that could otherwise be, have been challenging. So, but, you know, again, using technology where we can is also a good opportunity, so thanks for mentioning that.
Thank you.
Now, it's funny you mentioned that because I also saw it in the social media rabbit hole that I was on. And people do want to know because they're planning or they're traveling maybe out of the country and they need to know when school ends in a certain year and how many snow days could be built in. So I think it's important for people to pay attention to it, and we know what that subscribe thing is for. And it will be posted on our website, and we do want feedback on the calendar every year. So if anybody wishes to reach out, just reach out at our email address, and we really want to know what people think. Anything further? We're all good. All right, thank you. Okay, next, under Finance and Operations, Ms. Amy Clutter, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, will provide a fiscal year twenty-five budget overview that includes information on key areas of budget responsibility, key investments, use. key investments, use of grant funds and optimization of additional resources. She'll also provide information for the FY twenty-four curriculum instruction and assessment budget as well. Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to share about the curriculum budget tonight. As you know from the report, I think the strong, a mark of a strong district is the degree to which we prioritize student and educator needs. And so our strategic goals ask us to do ambitious things. It's important that we acknowledge our hardworking educators and just, and could craft a budget that meets the needs of both students and teachers. So I'm going to describe tonight the curriculum instruction and assessment needs required to support those educators and to maintain our current momentum towards improved academic outcomes for students. Because as you know, our strategic priority is around commitment to educational excellence in terms of the focus from, from my department. Some of the areas of our budget are predictable. There are certainly material needs every year and other specific investments that are important to specific groups or levels. There's also a cycle to purchase new materials, including replacing equipment and other resources like subscriptions or memberships to, Dr. Lizat mentioned EdWeek, we have a variety of different subscriptions to support leadership and also educators. And purchasing new materials is a matter of kind of staying current. So I'll talk about that later when we're thinking about our literacy materials. But requiring that our materials are up to date is really important, both from a compliance standpoint and also making sure that we provide an equitable and engaging experience for kids. So you can see some of the key areas of the budget responsibility here are the curriculum materials, ensuring strong instructional leadership and supportive teaching practices, coordinating state testing and using that information to think about how it informs our approach to, and our investments in materials, and facilitating professional development together with my other colleagues. You see me sitting here, but behind me is a team of twenty-four people representing curriculum instruction and assessment. So this is my opportunity to really acknowledge their hard work and their efforts to help kind of further teaching and learning in Shrewsbury. I'm really grateful also for the opportunity to highlight, yes, again, the addition of the reading specialists to that team. But it's a group of people at all levels that really contribute to looking at reading both within literacy and across other content areas. And I know you know from the report that one of the investments I'd be advocating for is adding to this team. But the focus of this report are the non-personnel aspects of the curriculum budget, so that detail is in the, in the written report. So already we're able to see that the supports we put in place last year are making a difference in terms of academic outcomes. Part of that support is the personnel that we've added in the form of our reading specialists. But part of that support is also using that assessment STAR system to kind of track data in between MCAS administration, the investment of time and energy in coming up with data cycles and extending grade level meetings, for example, so that teachers can see and monitor the progress that students are making. And this chart compares our fall to winter data, the percentage of students that are designated for reading support. Usually when we see a negative number, that's a bad thing, but they're highlighted in green because we're seeing fewer kids, for example. In first grade, twenty-one percent fewer kids needing qualifying for intervention. You can see in yellow that I've highlighted grade seven and eight because the farther kids progress, the bigger the gaps between their skill and their grade level expectations and it takes longer to close those gaps. So when we're thinking about supporting the needs of students who are older, it's important for, for us to think about that investment of that addition person at the middle level. I think it's also important to connect the budget to our strategic priorities. And one of the things that's really important about the curriculum budget is looking at professional learning over time. So for the past three years, we've invested in a cycle of professional development that includes universal design for learning, which makes a focus on increasing student agency and offering choice around how we ask kids to master content, diversity, belonging, inclusion and equity, furthering our understanding about and our application of that understanding to teaching and learning. And also then department priorities for, so you've heard me, you've heard Ken talk about the world language departments focus on oral proficiency. And for the past two years, they've been using their department meeting time and also some of their cycle time to really focus on developing new curriculum units and integrating those standards into their practice. Similarly, the Department for Performing Arts and Visual Arts had new standards and so they used that cycle to do that. And the flexibility of having a three-year cycle accomplished a lot of consistency in terms of messaging about where we wanted people to develop capacity. That's not to say we're going to have a cycle in the, in the next year. Our strategic priorities will dictate kind of where we put that energy. And you heard Dr. Lizat talk about the need to focus energy on social emotional learning and well-being. And you know from this priority, we're also going to focus on building literacy capacity. It's not sufficient to have a one-year plan to get people there. So this is an example of kind of the long-term investment in professional learning and what that looks like. So you know that we selected and have a small team implementing the Expeditionary Learning or EL literacy program. What you have to think about a new way of coining that so that it doesn't get confused with English learners. But after a four-year, a year-long selection process, last year, the Literacy Council selected the new program, the EL Education Literacy Curriculum. And this year, a team of thirty-three teachers, including general educators, special educators that are co-teaching, and one English language education teacher that is co-teaching or using the program with about seven hundred students. Their work under the guidance of our instructional coach and curriculum coordinator team and the Massachusetts Tiered Literacy Consultant, who's our technical assistant, Kristin Osborne, will enable a successful full implementation of the program next year. And students and teachers are finding the new program to be rigorous and highly engaging and also challenging to shift their practice. So continuing to offer professional learning to both support that shift and support our students is really important. As you can see here, the increase in our fiscal year twenty-two-five budget reflects the planned investments in literacy materials for teachers in grades K to six next year. So all in all, we'll be looking next year for a proposed budget of eight hundred and forty-six thousand, thirty-eight dollars. And this is a, a graph that kind of shows how the, the pie is kind of sliced from a curriculum budget perspective. You can see there's nine slices or spending categories. You can also see clearly that educational supplies and instructional equipment are still the biggest drivers of the budget. So essentially, most of our dollars go to students and educational materials. With the remaining piece, those multiple colors at the top being professional development. And when we think about professional development, we're thinking about not just the professional development days, but also professional development opportunities that happen in the summer, curriculum hours to develop and, and keep current our, our curriculum guides. And also our mentoring program for our new educators who are coming on board in Shrewsbury. Finally, as we work to kind of honor the diversity in our schools, it's important to be mindful that teachers need updated resources that are aligned with the standards and help students to see themselves in the curriculum. We talk about the curriculum being both a window into other cultures and also a mirror, so that students see themselves reflected in the curriculum. And an additional sixty thousand dollars for new social studies textbooks is included in the proposal for this year's budget. I think it's important also to acknowledge to the community who may not know so much about federal entitlement grants that we receive, you know, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars from the federal government to supplement the curriculum budget. And while this seems like a huge chunk of money, these funds alone are not sufficient to cover the cost of needed materials and programs. So, for example, the district mentoring program that I mentioned is being a key part of onboarding new staff, the three-year commitment to new educators that join us, used to be able to be funded entirely with our Title II grant, and that's no longer the case. That's a good problem to have. We have new educators and we're investing a lot in their onboarding. But that means that takes dollars from another part of the pie. And so I think it's also really important to talk about how we optimize resources beyond the federal entitlement grants. So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has done a nice job of identifying and providing incentives to partnership with outside organizations. So we've been engaged with two of those organizations. I mentioned the Mass Tiered Literacy Academy and the benefit of having some additional coaching hours, sixty hours of professional coaching each year through that, through that grant at no cost, including access to self-paced courses and two graduate-level courses that Kristin Osborne taught at the Summer Institute last year and will teach again this year. And we've also been working with a professional learning organization called TNTP, who's really looking at strengthening instructional leadership in general. And we've spoken specifically on math at the middle and high school level and ninth grade, social studies and English. So that gives us a coach that comes through and does instructional rounds, reflects with the district leaders of those departments about what we're seeing as trends and how, and supporting them and providing professional development to their departments. DESI also unveiled a sub of a high-quality instructional materials grant, so you know that we received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the, the cost of acquiring the new curriculum for everybody would be five hundred thousand dollars. So that's half the, the cost, which is terrific. And finally, Dr. Lizat's been really instrumental in finding either discounted supplies or free donations. Like Staples has been great for, to us when we're promoting summer reading and summer learning activities, so every little bit counts. And finally, Kelly Penner is sitting behind me and maybe I could make her laugh, but when we do new curriculum adoptions, we don't throw out the old curriculum. So in terms of being efficient, you know, she knows if there's, if there's old materials that we're using, we can use them in a different way. So we don't use the crawfish unit in grade five anymore, but when we went to a new hands-on approach to kind of phenomenon-based science, we took all of the materials out of that kit and just redistributed them to different science units. When we went from everyday math to Math in Focus, we didn't throw away the manipulatives that came to that. We bought fewer of them because we had a bank of manipulatives. And similarly, you know, when we looked at the programs that we didn't select, they came with materials that the publishers didn't want back that are terrific supports for our language learners and we redistribute those. And some of the leveled readers we have in our library, we're not going to use in small group guided reading anymore, but they become really valuable as text sets. So those, those materials date back to two thousand and six, but we're still using them. So I don't want anybody in the community to think that we're wasting the resources that we have. And that's a quick synopsis.
Any comments or questions?
Thank you very much for the report. It's extremely helpful. And I would encourage people to take a look at your report online as well tomorrow because it's more detailed. And I really appreciated the budget overview that you gave us, that kind of gave us a nice snapshot of, you know, kind of what the investments are you're looking for. And it was very helpful. I did have a question on the Title III federal grant money. And given that we're having an increase in English language learners and the immigrant population in Shrewsbury, do you anticipate maybe seeing more funding coming our way through that, that grant?
It's a great question. I would hope so. Sometimes the lag, we get a lagging indicator, so we might not get it in the next fiscal year, but the year after. Certainly with Title I, we've seen that increase and then that drop sometimes. But we have every reason to think that our funding will stay level. So in other words, we shouldn't expect to lose any dollars and that's what's really critical to me as first. But it would be really nice, given the increase, if we did see more funding, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate your presentation and I, I, I think in, in so many ways, this is the, this is the beginning for us of these deeper dives into, into the budgetary pieces, but want to just call out how well it dovetails that you build your budgets and investments based on your strategic plan. And that's our important, are we funding it? Are we doing what we need to do? And so want to appreciate that. I have, I also just feel the need to, I feel like you've given yourself a little bit of short shrift here. The, the amount of efficiencies and or grants to offset that we're, you know, you're, you're looking at nearly a million dollars in, in fiscal twenty-five is an awful lot of money. That also means a lot, an awful lot of chasing, whether it's yourself, whether it's Dr. Lizat assisting you, whether it's others and at the, at the departmental level. I know it was not long ago, we, we accepted the, you know, quarter of a million dollars for literacy materials. And so it's just really important for the community, especially to appreciate the efforts that you're putting in, but also the success that you're finding in doing that. And when, when, when we know and someone looks at your graph that says the numbers are going up, well, we're also finding ways to kind of help to, to offset that. So it's, it's not actually reflective of the investment, it's an infection of our dollars that we're going to put in here, but not actually what, excuse me, what the children of Shrewsbury will be able to benefit from. So I did have one question largely because I think when I looked at your, the pie charts on the breakout, it looked as though we have three different, you said there were sort of nine slices in your pie. Three of them relate to stipends for teachers, which is great, right? So we have a lot of supplies and then we have ways that we are, I have to assume and I'm looking for you to just tell me a little more because we have mentoring stipends, curriculum development stipends and professional development stipends. Maybe you could just speak to like how those are different from each other because getting materials is one thing and then giving, making sure the teachers have all the different supports. And I would imagine that's sort of what those are sort of trying to amplify or, or move on. And if I added those up, I mean, I can't really do it well in a pie chart, but it looked like a pretty significant part of the investments of like making sure that teachers are being compensated for work that we think is important and hopefully aligns to the investments you're trying to make.
We did an awful lot of curriculum development last summer in the area of math, following the work with the TNTP team instructional, kind of looking at our Algebra II and our access for, so we, we had a lot of that. We also, the social sciences department, in part, there's a big, big reliance on finding educator teams that are willing to work over the summer, right? So in COVID years, that was smaller. We, we saw a great resurgence last summer, which is really exciting. And the directors at the high school particularly avail themselves of that because they don't have built-in collaboration time during the year in the way other levels do. But a curriculum stipend is, it looks like a big slice of that pie, but it's a negotiated rate. So it's around forty dollars an hour to develop curriculum materials and to refine lesson plans and units and things like that. So when I talked about the world language department, thinking about how to emphasize oral proficiency, looking back at how, you know, how you can integrate oral, oral speaking opportunities and French, for example, is a good way of using those dollars. But similarly, thinking about what is the curriculum focus for in Algebra II? And how do we start with a problem solver that's accessible to everybody? So Jean Marie Johnson is the director of that department at the high school, noticed a trend of, kind of, we've invested in whiteboards all around math rooms so that kids could enter a math class in the first five minutes simultaneously solve problems. And in some, in some classrooms, they were more heavily utilized than others. So she wanted to go back to that text and make sure she oriented all the new educators in her department to kind of thinking consistently about making use of those materials. That's an example of what might happen during that curriculum time. In terms of professional development, those are stipends that we pay to people to lead professional development.
Okay.
And then what's the third one?
Mentoring.
Mentoring. So we have three mentor coordinators, one for each level. And then they supervise and support a crew of mentors that are both, in your first year, you have a one-to-one mentor. So each person who's mentoring another person gets a stipend.
Okay.
And then in your second year, it's a small group mentoring model where you've got kind of a building-based mentor who coaches in a small group. And then in your third year, it's more of a self-paced course. But managing the mentoring logs and all of that is also something, it's a stipend opportunity.
Thank you for the explanation. Can I have one more, one more comment? I, each one of those feels important for different reasons, right? And so the idea that when we go back to our conversation just an hour or so ago about the culture in our buildings, well, how do we, how do we bring new people in and have them understand our culture? And mentoring, we know is certainly the best, best practice in lots of industries. So I'm, I'm happy to know that we're doing that and compensating people for doing it. And then it's a, it's a, it's a, again, not the biggest pieces of the pie, but not a small piece either because we think it's, we think it's important. And, and that are, that we, though we don't just sort of buy supplies and expect teachers to like do what they do with it, you need to then have some time to think about how to, how to, so thank you for those examples. The only other thing I wanted to call out was we've spent a lot of time here talking about literacy. And I think that's the right thing to talk about and I think it's important, but it's, but it's, the, also the, the work that the teams are doing with TNTP is really important and I don't want it to be sort of missed that we also think that middle and high school levels and that, you know, just, especially within your budget right now, there's a lot of literacy-based work and that's, it's an important investment. But talking and thinking about how do we bring some more rigor to our math and social studies at the middle and high school is, is really important. And we know that this is a community that, that expects a lot of our kids by the time they're done with us. And so we have to keep looking at that across all the different programmatic areas. And so while literacy is taking a lot of attention right now and that's, that's the right thing to be doing, we know that there's so many different areas. And so I'm thrilled that we're both part of that program and starting to see some things. and starting to see some things that will be implemented over, over time. Um, because we know middle and high school, whether we look at your data frankly about literacy at the, at the middle level, um, you know, it's an, it's an important time to kind of get, set kids up well for high school. So I just want to also appreciate the, the partnership we have there. But also, you know, and again, some offsets in funding to help us to do the work is also appreciated. So thank you.
On that note, you'll hear in a future presentation about, uh, from our director of social science, about a thirty thousand dollar grant she just received from Genocidal Education. We talk a lot about literacy, but we are moving forward in terms of teaching and learning in every department.
Rachel.
Um, not to sound like a parrot, however, almost everything that you said, um, I agree with Ms. Teffernan, um, you definitely undersold how much you and your team have done in terms of finding grants and repurposing because that, a million dollars is a lot of money. And that's a lot of money that you were able to offset that we, when we're looking at the bigger budget, don't have to say, what can't we fund because we have, we're paying for this? Um, and it is a lot to research grants, to prepare the information, to apply for it. Um, and that goes above and beyond. And for your group, for Dr. LaZot's group, for anybody that's doing grants, um, thank you for that because this makes a huge difference, um, at the schools, for the students, for the teachers. But when we're considering the district and the budget, that's a huge thing that we don't have to think about what not to fund because of that. And the other thing is, um, I'm, I'm so excited with literacy to see how the STAR assessments and literacy has really shifted in the, the lower levels and how that has come down. I'm excited to see winter to spring statistics on, um, what that has done. But I think, um, supporting a reading specialist, an additional reading specialist at the middle school shows because they're just, you know, they're not moving as much that that will make a difference. Um, so I thank you for the work. Um, this is tremendous and it is a lot of work that's gone into this, but the investment is, is paying, paying off.
Thank you for the support.
John.
Yeah, I don't mind being a parrot, by the way. Uh, it can't be overstated how critical these grants are. When you look at nine hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in grants that we've either secured or maintained, uh, to put into this budget. I think it's just phenomenal and, you know, to my colleagues' points, there's a considerable amount of work that goes into that. And I, I even think like a quarter of that missing, like if we, we didn't get a quarter of that, we'd be having some challenging conversations. Um, I appreciate the summary and the transparency in the first two pages of this report. Uh, pages thirty-nine and forty, for those that are watching at home. We're going to need public engagement on, you know, we always have a budget hearing every year. If you read anything, read those two pages because it just breaks down budget responsibility. Uh, it gives the key budget investments, the what and the why, right? And then, you know, right through the efficiencies that have been established through this. So I just think it's, it's a great report and I think it's something the publisher should read, even if it's just those, those two pages, you know, that kind of factor into, you know, how we go about business in this district. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, you know, curriculum drives the services we provide for students. I think you're masterful how you present what needs to be done so that we, not educators, can understand where those needs are and why they cost what they are. Because we can look at the dollar, we can look at the percentage, but we need to know what that underlying need is. And I love your report. It, for anybody who, like John said, it gives a clear outline of the why and the how and what's needed. And it's, it's an easy way for people to see why we're asking for what we're asking. The grant piece is huge. I mean, we keep, we're going to keep repeating that because if we didn't have that money, we would be having very different conversations. And when you look at that bar graph that you showed, the, the years before, we're relatively low.
Yeah.
If you want to pull that, yeah. I mean, you look at that and we still had needs. We still had things that we needed to do. And I think through some of the leaner times in this district, ten years ago, we started to have to do a lot more with less in looking for more grants. And it's just become a pattern and practice of how we operate as a school district, which pays dividends because we're able to do more things with all the grants that all of you are bringing in. It's, it's very helpful. Um, what else did I have? One thing I, if you could talk about it, because we did talk about it a little when we were ordering textbooks and how that, because people say, well, we have iPads. Why do we need a textbook? Can you explain what publishers do and there still are, there's still a need for books? And, but they also have a different marketing way of things that we just have to do differently.
Yeah, so, so there's twofold answer to that question. One is that, you know, the, the research or reading and reading on technology versus reading in other places is compelling and new and evolving. So, um, there's benefit to reading, you know, a, a book versus interacting online. There's also the reality of students testing online and being able to mimic those experiences so that students aren't keyboarding on a small, you know, box as they're answering their assessments for the first time. So we really like the blended approach, um, using the iPad both as a learning tool. We emphasize it's a tool, um, and not just to learn, um, but also to express their own learning and to apply their learning. And, um, most recently with the adoption of CSAW and getting kids to kind of think about how they can use that as building a portal into their classroom. From a textbook standpoint, I think the, the challenge is, it used to be that you bought the book and the book was, had a shelf life and, uh, you owned that book for that entire shelf life. You didn't have to keep paying for it. And now they sell you a book or a digital subscription or both. You get a cheaper rate for the book if you buy the digital subscription. But when you take that approach, then you have to renew the digital subscription. There are some digital subscriptions that are more expensive than others, some that come with other pieces. So there's, um, an important process of kind of vetting what those, what those things are. And some of the free resources then become paid-for resources down the way or expose kids to advertisements and challenges like that that we just don't want for kids. So we have processes for looking at and evaluating, you know, is this high-quality textbook? And is it, is it up to date and going to kind of mirror what we want kids to learn about the world? And is it presented as free bias as we can make it? Or when there's bias, do they represent multiple perspectives? And our kids see themselves in the curriculum? But the digital piece is that it feels like the new curriculum industrial complex. I'll just be honest about that. Uh, and I've had conversations with publishers where they've given me a price and I've said, you know, forgive me, I can't go to school committee for that. And the price comes down twenty thousand dollars. And you think, okay, so what was the real price? Uh, that's really frustrating for me because there's a lot of back and forth around stuff like that. Or two publishers who produce the same thing and saying, well, I'm noticing you're charging this for this and you're charging this for this. Is that the best price that you can give me? Um, and so there's a lot of time that goes into looking at that. But I think the biggest change is really that the pairing of digital resources with concrete hands-on textbooks and not wanting students to take home a World Civ textbook, back and forth to school in their backpack that's this thick, makes it really appealing to have a digital thing that teacher can push out a reading assignment. But then that means thinking about what's the long-term impact of, of the digital subscription. And I clearly look at, okay, well, they might give us a better rate if we have a two-year contract, but I hope that the Alex contract doesn't come about at the same time we have to renew the STAR contract because that's a hell of a bang, you know, if they're all renewing at the same time. And so, um.
In a lot of time, like you just said, you, you're dealing with publishers and you're having to broker a deal so that we get the best price possible for the district. So there's so much that goes in. I mean, curriculum, again, I think it drives everything we do. But there's a lot behind the scenes to get that out to the students. And we do it in a way that's thoughtful, um, as efficient as possible in dollars as well. And things change over time and we have to keep up with any of the mandates that we have for curriculum. So thank you. Um, I think, I love the report. It's very well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Sawyer?
I thank Ms. Cloder for the report and for all of her hard work that you've all noted. Um, and similarly, I said earlier, uh, about Dr. LaZot. I mean, Ms. Cloder's all over the district all the time. Uh, and there is spending lots of different plates in terms of initiatives and, and, uh, different study groups and, and, uh, you know, some really super-high-quality work. She's an extraordinary instructional leader and appreciate the way that she's dedicated to supporting all of our instructional leaders and all of our faculty and staff and helping to provide the best that they can to, to our kids. Uh, I, I would just mention, I, I, this afternoon, out of curiosity, I looked at the, the, and Mr. Gerard's going to do a report on this in an upcoming meeting, but, uh, the updated fiscal twenty-three per pupil expenditure statistics, excuse me, came out. Pardon me. And, uh, the, uh, Shrewsbury's, uh, statistic was about seven hundred and twenty-four dollars per student and the category is instructional materials, equipment and technology. It's combined into one category. Um, so it's a good segue with Mr. LaRue coming on in a moment. Uh, but, uh, the state average is about eight hundred and sixty-five dollars per student. So that difference of a hundred and forty-two dollars or so, uh, you multiply that by fifty-nine hundred kids plus, um, it's about eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars below the state average that we're spending. Um, so, you know, I, I think that we're making appropriate investments. Um, it's an area we were, you know, prior to the first override in two thousand and fourteen, I think we were, our statistic, we were like in the bottom two percent in the state in spending in sort of this sort of category. Obviously, we've done better since then. Uh, but we, you know, you could tell from that bar chart, we've never invested, you know, we're not over-investing. We need to make sure we're providing what we need. We're using alternative resources and funds wherever we can and grants. And I appreciate you recognizing that work. Uh, but, uh, again, I think we're being very cost-efficient with how we approach this and, uh, you know, making good use of what we have and then being very picky about what we bring in. So, uh, but again, the quality of the work. I know there's a couple of personnel requests in the budget. You mentioned the reading specialist, which certainly I recommend, uh, that would start at the seventh, eighth grade level, at least for, for starting next year. Uh, in terms of the, uh, there's a, an English language education coordinator, but, uh, in two weeks from tonight, Christina Manos, the director of, of English language education, will make a presentation. She can talk more about that particular position. Um, ultimately, that's under the umbrella that Ms. Cloder supervises as well. But, uh, she does extraordinary work. We're very fortunate to have her in the district and appreciate the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, under Finance and Operations, Mr. Brian LaRue is here with us tonight, Director of Information Technology, and he is going to provide the FY twenty-five information technology budget.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. I wanted to bring, uh, three key messages to kind of illustrate, uh, the point that we're at in the IT, with the IT department, uh, at this point here. One is that technology use remains high. Uh, we're no longer, thankfully, in the daily Zoom phase. But educators have become much more comfortable with the use of technology on a day-to-day basis. So that's, uh, really kind of increased our baseline of technology use. And we're happy to see that, that people are taking advantage of the technology that we offer. Um, cybersecurity demands have exceeded the capacity of our, of our existing resources. We're both in, uh, mainly in time, but, uh, some resource, uh, non-personal resources as well. And finally, ongoing, uh, needs for refreshing essential technology are a major cost driver. Uh, so again, uh, the pandemic kind of raised our level of technology use. Um, our IT staff members work very hard. And thanks to the committee's support, we've been able to add frontline tech support over the past few years and that's been very much appreciated and helpful. Uh, aside from the crunch time at the start of the year, I think, uh, people would say, or staff members would say that we're able to resolve frontline issues, uh, you know, fairly time, uh, effective, effective basis. Uh, where we are struggling is where we get more complex requests for either new technology or things that may present some, uh, security challenges and that kind of thing. And that's where things land on my plate and that's where we've been struggling with bandwidth a little bit. Uh, one area that, uh, has changed recently is that we're, we've increased our, um, level of vetting of new technology, uh, that teachers request, uh, apps that are on the iPads, uh, any, any, um, technology systems that, uh, have involved student data. Um, and at the elementary level, uh, websites that students can access as well. Uh, I've been working, uh, in conjunction with Shawna Powers, Director of Instructional Technology Media Services on this extensively. She's kind of been vetting tools with an eye toward alignment on the instruction, instructional side, kind of making sure that we don't have ten different tools that are doing the same thing, if possible. Um, and I've been looking at it from the point of view of, uh, safety, privacy and security. Um, you know, we run into some tools where they'll, they'll be trying to be helpful and they'll add these either social features or, you know, community sharing for resources, which sounds great, but when you're trying to protect kids and make sure that they don't see things they shouldn't see, introduces some complications. Uh, Ms. Cloder mentioned, you know, advertisement, that kind of thing. And, and, uh, one tricky part with advertisements, uh, with online tools is that, you know, when you look at a tool, one day, third-party ads may look okay. You know, it's bad for cardioship or something. But then, uh, some poor students looking at it another day and they've decided to change out the ad and it becomes something different. So we, we try to be careful about what tools we approve. Uh, so that takes some time as well on a day-to-day basis. Uh, one of the biggest things that we're struggling with right now is, uh, the increased demands that cybersecurity, um, the cybersecurity landscape, uh, present here. So these are some examples of headlines of, uh, challenges that districts have been presented with. And, uh, it's really kind of a triple threat of increased pace, complexity and severity of threats. Um, you know, we must make sure that we're protecting the highly confidential data that we're entrusted with, the data related to students, families and staff members. Um, in addition, you know, aside from the data itself, a cyber attack could paralyze our systems and, and, uh, you know, for an unspecified period of time with a significant impact on our day-to-day instructional program and, and operations. So we really are trying, uh, our level best to prevent that kind of thing from happening. Couple areas that, a couple examples of security, um, threats on a day-to-day basis. Uh, you know, vendors will release security patches, say for a, an internet-facing system. And once, once a security patch is released, it becomes kind of a race between defenders such as us to get, install the patches. And at the same time, we're working to do that, criminals are looking to see, okay, well, what was, what was fixed? How can we leverage that vulnerability? And it, it's really a race against, against time. Back in October, Comcast had a data breach. And I think the time between patch, the release of the patch and the time that they were compromised was six days. Um, so it's really, we're really, it's incumbent upon us to act fast when these things happen. Uh, in addition, there are some things called zero-day vulnerabilities where by the time the vendor releases the patch, it's already being exploited. So that really reduces the margin of error to zero for, for time for us to react to it. In terms of, uh, we, we, we had an example today, actually, where a large number of, a decent number of staff released, uh, received a phishing email purporting to be a Google log from Dr. Sawyer. It wasn't, it was a form, you know, asking for them to log in and, and enter their password to see whatever he had sent. Um, so we're, you know, it's, we're reacting on a, on a frequent basis to things that are coming our way. Uh, so as I mentioned before, our staff, our staff works very hard and I'd like to, like to thank them publicly, publicly for doing excellent work. Um, it really is a, a group effort to, to keep all this running. Um, just to give you a quick overview of our, our staff, myself as the director, we have, uh, we share an administrative assistant. Uh, we have a data manager who manages things like Power School, our database systems. Um, we have a data specialist who works with, um, Ms. Cloder, Ms. Malone on the, on the HR side for, uh, data analysis, but also for, uh, state reporting for staff, um, data. And, uh, we have a network manager, uh, two, a one-tier, two IT support specialists who kind of handles issues that may be escalated above a building frontline level. Uh, we have a senior AV technician, a, uh, frontline AV technician and nine IT support specialists at the building level. Uh, so we have at least, we've, uh, one person, at least one person at most buildings. We share at, uh, Spring and Parker Road and between Central Office and Patton. And, uh, we have two people at the high school. Uh, so to kind of address some of the, the issues that we're having in terms of bandwidth, um, I'm proposing that we, uh, add an IT project manager position. This would be a one-point-oh FTE, estimated about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We're kind of stuck in a mode of reacting to day-to-day things that are coming our way and we're, we're having trouble moving toward, moving things forward. Uh, implementing systems that we've been requested to implement to improve operations or implementing things that we need to implement to kind of keep our, our things running the way they should be. So, uh, this would include, you know, research, implementation, documentation, integrating. new projects into our existing support processes on a day-to-day basis, and also training. And a sample of some potential near-term projects would include a new transportation management system that we're working on, a replacement for our phone system that's going out, end-of-life within the next couple of years. A new IEP and five-oh-four plan tracking system that's related to new, a new state mandate for a new IEP form from DESI. Facility use scheduling improvements, Wi-Fi authentication changes, that's an example of, you know, it's not a new system, but it's something we have to do to kind of keep things running the way they have been running. And a human capital management system, which includes things like time-off requests and onboarding and making that whole process more efficient to give the HR department so much needed relief in terms of being able to leverage technology to manage their workload. And another request that I have for a position is a, an IT, a second IT network manager position, estimated about one hundred and ten thousand. And this would basically improve our capacity to mitigate cybersecurity and other risks that we face. We've also had an increase in the number of off-hours events that need things like Wi-Fi service and that kind of thing. And so this would allow us to establish a formal on-call rotation between staff and kind of increase our resilience in this area. Right now, we're kind of in an area where one person does one function, but there's not really much of a built-in backup for, for if they, if they need to go out or if there are other issues that pop up, basically. And one issue that we have is a, that there are ongoing needs to refresh technology. And we have, we have a large base of existing technology, and we have aging equipment in some areas. And one challenge that we face, similar to what Ms. Clutter mentioned about subscriptions expiring and that kind of thing, a lot of technology that we have will have, they call it end-of-support dates or end-of-life dates. And what that means is that after that point, the vendor will no longer issue security updates, which, as we've seen, is very important. So we can't really let them go beyond that date. So we're kind of on a hamster wheel a little bit in terms of having to replace some, some of the technology that may be, may be working okay. But, you know, if we're not able to keep it secure, we can't really keep using it. And there are other pieces of equipment where it's just aging. And, you know, one of our computer labs at the high school, for instance, is, you know, some of the equipment is failing and we need to just, you know, replace it. The phone system, again, is one of the systems that has an end-of-life date in the next couple of years. It's a bigger project, so it would be good for us to get a jump on that. Network switches and also projectors as well. But obviously, we have budget constraints that we have to deal with. So the IT non-personal requests for FY twenty-five for needs that we have totals two-point-seven million dollars. A lot of those items are one-time needs. So there are some big, big-ticket items that come up every, you know, five or six years that may, that aren't year-to-year needs. So for instance, like the staff laptops, the student iPads, we have cycles, replacement cycles built into the appropriate, appropriate budget each year to replace those things. But there are bigger ticket items like network switches and computer labs that are kind of one-offs that don't happen every year, that we have to kind of allocate for. So the initial FY twenty-five superintendent's recommendation is a four-point-two-five percent increase over the current year, and that includes funding for one-point-five million dollars. And that would cover not all, but a lot of the things that we're doing now, including some additional security services that we've started to subscribe to, which help monitor our network on a twenty-four-by-seven basis to supplement our existing staff. Because we want to make sure that we're protected at all times, even if, you know, one of us is awake or, you know, that kind of thing. So obviously, there's a gap there. So we're pursuing alternative sources of funding, including some one-time funding to try to address that gap and see if we can make some of those one-time expenditures happen while still being fiscally responsible within the context of the appropriate budget. So I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions or comments? John?
Thank you for the report. I think you said it best, tech use remains high. And I think curriculum and technology, you can't have one without the other, right? I think we made a significant commitment back in two thousand and twelve when we onboarded one-to-one iPads. And, I mean, the rest is history, right? I think we were in a good position leading up to the pandemic. I think we feel fortunate about where we were. But clearly, post-pandemic, it's a game changer, right? Now, it's all one-to-one. And the strain on IT resources is significant as a result. And I think the proposed tech personnel that you have in this budget are really important because there's only so much we can do. This, this is a significant project. Cybersecurity is significant. I mean, if our networks are compromised for any reason, our productivity is going to take a big hit. I speak from experience. I think I might have mentioned it in a previous meeting. I mean, towards the end of last year, I was in a position where all of my communication methods and planning methods and systems were inaccessible for a week, and I was scrambling, you know? So having gone through it myself, I just recognize the importance of the roles that you're proposing. And I think it makes sense. I feel as passionate about technologies that do grants. It's, you know, they're, they're both key drivers to our success. And I think as you, as you'll see in the booklet, and definitely encourage the public to review, even the summary that you outline, pages fifty-three through fifty-five, we can't do it all, right? I think, you know, the proposed budget, you know, goes through, you know, the personnel that you, you know, that you're recommending. But when we talk about, you know, some of the replacements to aging hardware, there's six-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars that we, you know, would need to consider if, if something happens or if we're able to, you know, work with Selco or however that works. But that's still added stress and strain to your system. More tickets, you know, for, you know, maybe staff that need their computer repaired or fixed or replaced. So, you know, that, that continues. You highlight the ninety-seven thousand dollars in, in Power School improvements. That is obviously a key application that's used by staff, students, and parents, right? And then the one-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars to change and secure existing systems. Again, additional risks and vulnerabilities that we need to consider. So I definitely encourage public engagement on this one as well. And you would really like to get the feedback from the public during our hearing. But thank you for putting this together. Again, a great report.
I also would like to thank you for the report. It's extremely helpful. The thing that struck me the most is seven thousand users on a daily basis. I mean, it's just, you deal with a lot of issues every day. And I get, I, like Mr. Wensky, support the addition of the two positions that you propose. I think especially with the project manager role, I think if we can get someone in that position, that investment would make a tremendous impact on efficiencies down the road for every, other people in the district as well. You know, special ed, you know, being able to do that IP, the IEP record system to get that going and off the ground. Like that would, the trickle-down effect, I think, would be very great and taking burdens off of other people as well. If those new systems can come on, same thing with like absence management, you know, things of that nature. So I think it's a really important, ongoing investment in our infrastructure that we should be, you know, looking at. And I appreciate all of the, the work that you put into outlining all of it, you know, you know, obviously, we probably won't be able to do all of it. But to show us what your needs are and where some of these, you know, maybe one-time investments are versus things that are, you know, on a, on a more regular basis in the, the budget. So thank you very much. Very helpful.
Thank you.
Lindsay?
Yeah, I certainly really appreciate all, all of the information and really appreciate you also laying out that we have needs that are currently beyond our ability to fill them. And, you know, we, we live in a world of constrained resources, and that doesn't mean these are not all really good investments to be making. I'm just remembering sort of harkening back to our safety and security audit for which cybersecurity came up there. This is not just that Mr. Wensky had a bad experience, like this is a problem, right? This is, this is a known, a known issue that we need, that we need to address. And clearly, I think you're presenting a really comprehensive way for us to think about it. I'm really glad to hear that you've brought on some twenty-four-seven monitoring to help alleviate those, you know, calls on the weekends and nights. We, we want you to have a life too and have that work-life balance. But this is, this is, this is a twenty-four-hour problem, right? And so I'm glad, when I think about it, I think you're undercounting the number of people that are part of this organization. Because, you know, we have a little under a thousand staff, six hundred students. I have a Power School account, like there are all these parents who have all these different accounts too, and these different communication platforms and that, that's sort of like, you know, I have multiple logins for Shrewsbury-related things. So I, I just think that there's, this is quite a large network. And if we just looked at staff alone for an organization, we have this interesting thing that I think it's like doesn't, we're not always comparable to the business world, right? So we have a, let's, let's raise it a little bit, close to a thousand staff. For an organization that had a thousand employees, what would be an appropriate-sized IT department? And then you say, but what if all of your clients were actually also your, sort of, our end-users, right? And it's a very different way for a customer to come to a business, right? We're not responsible for your IT needs, we're responsible for the business. Like, oh, we're just as responsible for the student's IT needs, and we're just as responsible to make sure the parent can log in to Power School. So I gotta do high school course selection this evening, right? So that, like, we're, we're all a part of this system and making, and making it work. So I certainly, I, I wish we had more resources to cover all of the things. I appreciate your sort of explaining what all the different opportunities are for us to, for us to make important investments. And I'm sure as we go through the budget process, we'll be wrestling along with you about how to, how to kind of hopefully close that gap. So it's not a, a one-point-two-million-dollar, you know, on, on, on the table here. But it's, but it, but it is so fundamental to the work that we do today in, in education. But it also just, the, the choices that we're making and the priorities for the, about curriculum, but also how teachers do their work. And I, I remember a couple of years ago when you started to say, well, the light bulbs aren't sold anymore in the overhead projectors. And you're like, okay, so if you can't get light bulbs, I guess we gotta start replacing all of those. And I see it on your list, like, we're not done, we still gotta replace them all, right? And so there are so many things that are outside of our control, like stopping supporting, you know, software or, or other, other pieces. So even light bulbs can lead to us needing to make investments. So we're very glad to have you here to help guide, guide this. But thank you very much for the time.
I too, I appreciate the report. I appreciate you listing out everything for us to consider and knowing that they can't all be done at the same time. I too am very, I feel very strongly with the cybersecurity and having somebody in that role. I work in a hospital, and there are many times that the system is either hacked and the systems go down, and we're kind of stuck, and we're like, oh, what do we do? Because we've been using technology, there was a time that we didn't, but we don't remember that time anymore. But would you be able to, because, you know, you had said in it that if we were ever hacked and compromised, that would paralyze us. So for most people, they'd be like, okay, so the kids don't use iPads, like, big deal, pull out the pen and the paper. But without going into detail, so nobody hacks us, what would that actually look like? Because it's more than, we just can't use our iPads in a day.
Yeah, so if it was, you know, if there were, just to say, if there were no, there's no technology use in a given day, you know, it would affect things like parents calling in to report an absence. Teacher's ability to record absences and attendance and making sure that we have, you know, track, are keeping track of where students are on a given day. You know, if there's a student doesn't come to school, making sure, reaching out to the families to making sure that they know their child's not at school. You know, the communication systems in the building in terms of like the PA systems, phone systems for, you know, calling nine-one-one or reporting an emergency in the building. Those are some of the base-level things that impact day-to-day operations. Aside from a teacher, you know, just teaching their lesson in front of a group of students on the projector. You know, that's, there are a lot of, you kind of alluded to, are kind of, we've gotten used to things. So we've gotten used to the ability to wirelessly project in a classroom. You know, so that requires a network. So it goes to, you know, again, our baseline having gone up. But that requires that we keep the foundation under people at all times when, when they are relying on us to provide those services. So those are some examples of things that would, would go awry if there were no technology use on a given day.
I mean, Brian, you make the school district run. I mean, I, I think of during the work your team did during COVID, if anything good came out of COVID. We did advanced technology probably faster than we would have normally, so that's good and bad. And it's just, we're so dependent on this to do the business of the school district. So if something happens, that's a huge problem. And this, like Ms. Effron said, it's a small staff for the size of the customers that you have. And adding to that, the parents, it's, it's a lot of people coming. And I, and I'm pretty sure, I think you were working on Thanksgiving, there was a, was it you on Thanksgiving, the cyber issue or?
Yeah, there was, yeah, there was an alert that came through that we had to investigate. Ended up being nothing, but yeah.
But again, it's, it's, it was a holiday, and you were working because we had one person on call, really. And, you know, and those are the things, so I fully support these two positions. I think they're not only necessary, we, we need that just for the pure scope of everything that happens. And the whole cybersecurity, I always think, the company I work for, we'd have a phishing test email once or twice a year. It's probably, sometimes it's like once a week. And if you get it wrong, you have to take a class online and your, your manager knows. So it's like, but we're seeing so many more, and they're very, they're clever, like you, you really have to guess. So I hit that it's phishing every time because I have no clue, and I'd rather not get caught. So it's, it's just, it's the world we live in. And again, we can't fill that gap. Maybe there's some one-time funds that we'll be able to do. But if we wait on a lot of this, it's just going to become more expensive down the road. And again, as we're open to, to issues either in providing services or cybersecurity issues. So I fully support it. I like your report as well. Like John said, anybody can read it and look at, this is the two-point-seven million, but this is why. And then, you know, the, the reduction in it, and this is why these numbers are there. So thank you, and thank you for everything that you and your team do for all of us.
Thank you.
Dr. Story?
I feel like we hit the trifecta tonight, and then we've had three, you know, outstanding leaders who are so, you know, particularly good at what they do in their realm of their responsibility between Dr. Lazard and Ms. Clutter and certainly Mr. LaRue. I think I've had the privilege of watching the evolution of our IT program since the time that we elevated Mr. LaRue into this role. And I would put the quality of what we do as far as our network, our support, our reliability up against any school district anywhere. It, it is rare that we have an outage. It's rare that if there's a problem, it isn't fixed within minutes. And, and the responsiveness of Mr. LaRue and his team is just outstanding. I want to thank all of them as well because they work really hard and they take a lot of pride in making sure, whether that's the network, whether that's audiovisual access for people, whether that's, you know, making sure that in, in the buildings, that our teachers and our paraprofessionals, who all have their own technology from the district, and our students are able to utilize it for their learning. And it's really, it's an extraordinary team. I also, in my recommended budget in terms of the two positions, for all the reasons that you stated, I think they're very important. I wish that my budget recommendation had more funding for the things that you see in the report that Mr. LaRue would like to be able to do if we had the funding. We are, you know, pursuing and working with, you know, a variety of options around one-time types of funding that could help alleviate some of those. And depending on how much of that we can access, we'll have to make some choices around, you know, do we not fund something we're already doing to do this other piece, or do we put that off for another year? You know, if, if funds become available as the, as the fiscal year goes on, can you make some investments? Those are things we're always looking at, and Mr. LaRue is always very thoughtful about how to leverage the, the funds available to, to do the, you know, what's most, the biggest priority in terms of that. I know you mentioned in terms of the Thanksgiving story, but I, you know, this, this twenty-four-seven monitoring system, I think is really critical, important investment that we've made. But it doesn't do it for us, right? It's like, you find out about it if it's really critical. I mean, if it's not, I mean, and, and so we need to have people on call. And that's just a different thing than what used to be existing. And, and it's high stakes for all the reasons that you said. And I know Mr. LaRue spoke to it, but I just want to emphasize, a lot of these issues are, you know, we have a responsibility for protecting the privacy of our, of our staff, of our kids, of our families. And, you know, we live in a digital world, we're all, we have very sensitive records that are, that are digitized. And we want to do everything we can to protect those, and we have a great team doing that. And I think these investments in personnel will make us stronger at being able to do that and make the system work for everybody, all seven thousand of the users plus families in the future. So appreciate the report and the information and all the high-quality work you've done to make this such a successful program for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have our minutes from our school committee workshop held on January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, and the minutes from the school committee meeting held on February seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Any changes or corrections? Nope. They can be marked as accepted as distributed.
And we do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, Purpose 7, open meeting law Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and releasing executive session minutes, B for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares, Purpose 3, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers' Association, and C for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff, and/or administrators. Purpose 2, where the deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and we will return to open session only for the purpose of adjournment for the evening. I may have a motion. Second. Roll call vote, is your cry, Rachel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Myself?
Aye.
Thank you and good night.